Oh, Robert. Anna is Colorado.
Craverman.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Belsky.
Here.
Cluter.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Baron.
Here.
Duber.
Can I have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes November 14th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments to the minutes? If you call roll, please.
Craverman.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Belsky.
Yes.
Cluter.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Baron. Duber.
Motion to approve the management operating budget for the year 2019? Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All right, if you call roll, please.
Craverman.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Belsky.
Yes.
Cluter.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Baron. Duber.
Yes. And next on the agenda is a presentation by Diane Bickett, the executive director of the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District. Please come up and just state your name and who you are and...
Is that better?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Diane Bickett. I'm the director of the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District.
Well, they can hear. But yeah, sure. If... Bob, will you move the microphone over here for her, please, then? Thank you, kind sir. Yeah, no, that's fine. Profile.
Are you watching it?
Video, I wouldn't be free to do this. Hi, I'm pretty. I brought... I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I do have like handouts, so if you want to follow along with my comments, I'm not sure I have enough copies, but...
Sure.
Saving paper. Saving paper, yes. Thank you for the invitation to come speak with you tonight. Bob had called to request that I come and fill you in on any changes that we're experiencing with recycling and what the local impacts might be. But those of you who are not familiar with the Solid Waste District, we're the public agency working to help residents and communities and businesses manage their waste in a sustainable manner. And we're formed out of a state law or a... Yeah, a state law passed back in 1988 and were... That required that counties form into solid waste management districts to write plans to reduce the amount of waste going to landfills. We've worked with Orange Village over the years in a number of ways. We handle your special waste, like your household hazardous waste and computers, scrap tires. We offer our grant programs. You've benefited from our grant programs. We do a lot of public education. And we've enjoyed working with Bob and Anna over the years on educating your residents about recycling. So tonight, well, first I have to say I have a little bit of an Invisalign lisp, so if you can't understand me, it's because I have plastic in my mouth and I'm like two weeks in, so... Anyway, so really, I wanted to explain about what's going on with recycling. It's been in the news a lot lately. It's been covered by The Plain Dealer and WCPN and Channel 3. It's also been covered on some of the national news programs, and the reasons are twofold. One is that curbside recycling is kind of nationwide. Contamination, and that means people putting the wrong things in their recycling carts. And in some communities, it's as high as 25 percent. So if you think of one in every four items going into the curbside recycling that shouldn't be there, that's a cost that will end up being passed along to your community because it has to be sorted out and then landfilled. The other... But contamination has always been a problem. People just don't really pay attention to the rules. I don't think your community's bad, but you know, there are some that really have an issue. And... But that's exacerbated by the fact that in 2017, China, which had been the world's major consumer of our recyclable material, now is not being the world's major consumer of our recyclable material. And in 2018, their government enacted restrictions on the amount of materials it would import into their country from the US and from other nations. So you know, prior to this, what's called the National Sword, which was their policy, about 70 percent of our waste paper and cardboard went there. This is nationwide, went to China for being made into all the plastic or the paper packaging that they would ship their products back in. And about 57 percent of the mixed plastic material was going there, too. If you look at what that is today, it's near zero. So worldwide, this has caused a problem because a lot of this material all of a sudden had nowhere to go. We've become dependent on the major end market being China, and our local processors are kind of feeling the pinch as they're trying to find alternative markets here in the Midwest and domestic markets. And this has caused a glut of material in the marketplace, and correspondingly, the prices dropped. So it's harder and harder for our material recovery facilities to operate because, one, they're dealing with the contamination, and, two, they're dealing with very low commodity prices. So just one example, about a year ago, paper would sell for about $95 a ton. That's what the processor would get for that material. Today, it's around $5 a ton. So when it costs about 70 to process it, to sort all that material and bail it and send it off to market, things are upside down right now. So... So what's the impact? The Solid Waste District has been doing a lot of these type of meetings, educating council people on what you might expect, as well as meeting with service directors and also meeting with our processors to find out, you know, their perspective on what's happening. And I'd like to just kind of touch on those right now. My notes. So starting with, you know, the impact to our, what we call our MRFs, which is a material recovery facility. The company that provides service to your community is Kimball. They're located in Twinsburg. There are three other processors that handle all of the curbside materials that are collected in Cuyahoga County. The other one is Waste Management. They're in Akron. There is Republic Services. They're in Lorain County in Oberlin. And Rumke is the fourth processor, and they're in... Well, they're here, but they have a facility in Columbus. And those are the companies that are most highly impacted by the China National Sword policy because that material tended to be dirtier. And when China said it would only take really clean material, you know, bales have to be less than 3 percent contamination, meet these high-low contamination rates, it's harder to compete with the paper that you would collect, say, from a paper-only processor, like a Gateway Recycling or a River Valley paper. So they are faced with lower commodity prices, having to sort out contamination to increasingly low levels, the lower prices. So they're in a position where they're starting to ask communities to help shoulder the burden by paying a processing fee or increasing their costs. Now, I don't know if Orange Village has been approached by Kimball. You're currently in a consortium with several other communities, and you're receiving a very good rate for collection and recycling and disposal. And you're, I think, have three more years to your contract, so that puts you in a good position to hopefully weather the storm unless they've come to you already asking for a price increase. Chagrin Falls, where I live, we just went out to bid, and we're paying a lot more for collection as a result of the situation, about $5 a household more. And they're also paying a $38 a ton processing fee for recycling, which never was charged before. So I think we're getting to the point where we're going to have to do some more cost-sharing and risk-sharing with the recycling processors. Are there any questions about that? Are you asking if there are other...
Be turned into energy, or I mean, is there some... Is there some way to do something other than... And what do we do with things that...
Happen?
Yeah. I mean, it just seems like after we tell these people to recycle these five materials, what are we talking about the rest of the materials?
Well, I mean...
Where we're headed here.
Right. I mean, so we, at the district, we look at various methods of managing waste. We look at long-term trends. We look at what other nations are doing. Ultimately, it comes down to what would be cost-effective here in Cuyahoga County for Cuyahoga County. So here in our county, as well as across Ohio, we have implemented a system to do curbside recycling. That was the thing that was most competitive with the cheap landfilling that we have here. So other states, you know, on the coast like New York, for instance, they have no landfill capacity, so landfills are more expensive. So here, it's about $40 a ton to dump waste. There, it's over $120 a ton. So when you get to those higher price points for disposal, some of the other waste to energy or waste conversion technologies become more cost-effective in that equation. But here, you know, the traditional curbside recycling methods are... Would have been thus far the most economical way to do it. So it's just very intensive to have to collect door-to-door, and... But that's what recycling is. It's collecting trash and collecting our resources separately, so...
Rejection of contaminated loads. What does that mean? Is that going to happen at the curbside?
That's a good question. So some of the haulers may start to reject loads once they, you know, receive them at their facility. So those... That would apply to communities at Self Hall, like St. Morlan Hills brought Kimball a load of highly contaminated recyclables. Or Cleveland, for instance, they could just say, "We aren't going to accept that load. Take it back." Or "We'll charge you $300 to process that load," or whatever. For communities that contract out for the collection, it could happen at the curb. We're not seeing a lot of that happening yet, where the hauler would have time to look in the carts to see if, you know, there's obvious contamination and then just leave the cart at the curb. That's probably the best way to, you know, get a message across to a resident that might be putting garbage in their cart. But then the communities have to take the call from the angry resident, too, so that's problematic as well.
No, I think we have a perfect opportunity to educate and tell our residents because we're not facing it yet, but we can educate. Ready for these.
There's...
We got two more years. One...
The material... The material that's currently curbside-loaded that might be contamin... What's happening as it goes to the MRF? Is it going to a landfill from there? What... Is it being co-mingled with the landfill material and then loaded into trucks and haul to the landfill?
It is, so...
So distinction between the intended recyclable material and the regular trash, regular waste material?
I'm not sure your point... So recycling's collected separate from trash, goes to a different place. It goes to a processing facility rather than a landfill. The contamination in the recycling could be anything from plastic bags and film that tangle in the recycling equipment. It could be people putting scrap metal in their carts that was never intended to be sorted out with the technology they have at the facility. It could be needles and sharps. It could be hazardous waste, things like that. So contamination really is more along the lines of actual garbage in the cart, you know, people using their recycling cart as an extra trash cart, more so than someone throwing a berry container that, you know, the recyclers really don't want. But either way, anything that they cannot market is going to be sorted out and then landfilled, so...
I have a suggestion, and maybe it's something worth looking into, maybe down the road. I suggested this to, many years ago, to what was BFI, and before they were sold to Republic. And that was to basically set up for the future to mine for recyclables. At that time, and this was in the 90s, the value of recyclables was negligible, if anything, and in the early 90s. And they, instead of just burying it indiscriminately in their landfills, is discriminate where they put materials in the landfills so that later on, should the value of that material go up, they could go capture it and then recycle it then, as opposed at a greater value, basically setting up their own future mining operation if they were so inclined to do it. And they thought that was a pretty novel idea at the time, and then they were acquired, and the idea just drifted off into outer space. But it may be something worth bringing back for some discussion as these companies look at how they're going to deal with this, the inability to dispose of contaminated recyclable materials. Over and above the fact that we in the community can help educate our residents to what they should and could be, and where they should and could be placing their material, which should really go into recycling and which should not go into recycling. Maybe we should focus it on what not and not what should. But that would...
We do not. If we operated the facility, we would probably do more... We would do a sortation, a waste composition study, for instance. But all we have is the anecdotal information we get from Kimball and Waste Management, and they kind of lump every community together, so they can't really... They're not, right now, doing any studies on your waste, on your recycling stream to help you understand how much, you know, what your levels are compared to Cleveland.
Early in your presentation, you said you don't think it's a bigger problem here. Was that just... Was that based on anything?
Just anecdotally, from like what I hear from Don Johnson. He's told me that, you know, some of the suburban communities are much lower than what Cleveland is bringing them. Cleveland is pretty bad. It's over the 25 percent, and...
Even do recycling, and then they did mandatory recycling. I'm sure I was very confused.
Confusion seems to be the name of the game, just in all, you know, residents are confused. We're confused because things are changing. We've changed our messaging, and thankfully, communities are adopting that messaging about what, you know, what's the core five materials that the MRFs really do want and can still market. So we've changed our messaging around plastics considerably to just say bottles and jugs now, because people don't understand what a 1 through 7 plastic means. You know, they were throwing every... If it was plastic, they would throw it in the bin. And so we'd had to explain that, you know, the numbering system does not mean anything. It refers to a resin coat. It doesn't mean it's recyclable, and not all plastic is recyclable. People don't want to hear that.
This... What's one of the biggest violators? What are the biggest violators that contaminate typically?
So the facilities tell us it would be tanglers. It would be anything that would tangle in the equipment. So it would be plastic bags and film, garden hoses, rubber hoses, that chains. Because when the material gets to Kimball's facility, it goes down a conveyor system, and they have a variety of technologies like Eddie, you know, Eddie currents and air separators and a variety of things that have moving parts, and, you know, plastic would get caught up in that moving part. They have to shut the line down, cut that material out. It's downtime. It's time-consuming.
Is it partially because of those contaminators, the tanglers, that this is... That a lot of the recycling isn't being accepted anymore? Bye.
So a lot of the... So the list of recyclables has not changed that much. I mean, we've always been able to do cans and glass and paper and cardboard. Cartons are new, and we've always been able to do like 1 and 2 plastics, bottles and jugs. And the problem is that we've migrated to a cart-based collection system, which the district pushed, and your community was one of the first to move from a blue bag to a cart, which was great because, you know, we gave people a nice container. They could recycle all their paper. They could recycle, you know... They... The carts were intended to encourage more recycling of the right things, but people started to, you know, use them as a garbage cart or just assume they could put more things in there. And as long as that material was getting picked up, there was the assumption that they were doing it right. So we're in the position of having to tell people, "You may not have been, you know, you think you may know how to recycle properly, but chances are, you're not doing it right," you know?
I think... Does anybody know what our recycling bins are printed? I think it says 1 through 7 plastic.
I looked at it just recently because Anna showed me a mock-up of a magnet that we're about to, with courtesy of grant funds from the Solid Waste District. With the calendar. And I don't think... I think I remember walking away and going, "Oh, these still work. These are still good."
I'll look at my can, but if that's a... Send the most consistent message and read... Some things out. I'm one of those, if it's plastic, it's in the recycled garbage because it's always...
Almost like if it's dry.
It's really old, something old, and then I don't, but...
Yeah, so you could use grant funds. We have a grant. You could buy stickers, and if you need to, you know, put them...
I don't...
Grant money?
Not any...
Additional grant money, but... Well, your calendar, which is very popular. Well, next year.
News, we've got... No, our residents are getting used to the calendar. It would be a problem to stop those.
So... That's very popular. Well, we are... That's under consideration with our solid waste plan update, so that's the other thing I wanted to mention tonight. Ohioi... The district is required to prepare a solid waste management plan for Cuyahoga County. We did that in 1994 with the first one. We're required to update it every five years, and that has to go to an approval process that'll start in January of this year for a 90-day period where the plan will go out to all city councils to be voted upon. So we would ask for your support to approve the solid waste plan update. There will be a series of meetings that will hold to educate, you know, everybody about what you're voting on, so there'll be more to come on that. But, you know, as we update our plan, it's really a strategic planning process for the district, so it gives us an opportunity to look at all of our programs and services and figure out what we're doing right, you know, what the cities want, all within, you know, the boundaries of what we can afford, so...
Are the companies starting to not do this service at the end of their contract because they can't afford to do it? Or they're just talking about raising the price, you know, through...
None of these companies want to shut down. They've invested millions of dollars in their plant, so we haven't heard any company shutting down. But I think, you know, going forward, they are going to have to change their pricing model somewhat, so it's more of a cost-sharing system with their customers. So then it'll be up to the cities to decide whether they can afford to continue to offer the service. Thing is still the same right now, for the most part. We... Cities are still, you know... We have 58 curbside recycling programs out of 59 in Cuyahoga cities in Cuyahoga County, so...
I've seen communities where the glass and paper and cans are segregated in little bins, and then when they're picked up, they have these trucks that have like three or four compartments in them. Do you have any sense of less contamination with that separation at the curb?
There would definitely be less contamination because you have the ability to look at everything while you're putting it into the truck. That was really how we were doing things back in the early 90s when I first started at the district. And the reason we got away from that as an industry was that it was very time-consuming to have all that labor. It was slow, and you'd have to have more personnel to do the collection, so...
They went to the arms.
So we want to automate a collection as an industry because that is more efficient than manual collection. You save on, you know, workers' comp costs because... And you use less labor, and you can get through a community faster. So it's more efficient collection, but the unintended consequence was all the, you know, contamination in the carts. I don't... That has come up with some of the conferences I've been to. Would the industry ever go back to that method? And they say, "No way," because it would be too expensive. I think Shaker Heights is probably the only city I know of that is still kind of operating as a source-separated type program.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for coming down and...
Thank you. Thank you for putting up with my lisp and all the good questions.
Detected it all.
No. Thank you.
Moving on to audience comments relating to agenda items only. Anybody? Yes? Sure? Could you please just state your name and...
Sure. My name is Michael Mooney, 951 Bell Road. Just here tonight just to make a few comments regarding ordinance number 2018-45, which was on November 14th council meeting agenda. Since the last meeting here at Orange Village Hall back on November 14th, this exact ordinance went before Beechwood City Council two times. The second time, which was this past Monday, December 3rd, Beechwood City Council voted to table the legislation indefinitely. That is what I kindly ask Orange Council to do as well when the time comes. We just still haven't received any of the requested information from Orange Building or Law Departments regarding zoning. However, in the meantime, I'm happy to announce that our family business has significantly reduced the amount of vehicles awaiting repair by over 50 percent, and we have installed privacy slats in our right-of-way fence to achieve our goal of 100 percent total screening from view. I'm also happy to announce that we have submitted our application for our site plan, which will go before P&amp;Z on December 18th meeting. I also just want to make it very clear that my business is 100 percent committed to resolving this issue as quickly as possible, and would ask council's support and dedication to make this a reality. Thank you, and I've... I brought some copies of the plans with me for anyone who is interested, and as always, our doors are always open and our phones are always on, so I would encourage everyone here and maybe everybody watching at home or elsewhere in the village's various departments, Service Department, Police Department, to maybe patronize our family business as much as they possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Mooney, thanks for coming down.
I just want to make it perfectly clear so that you know, December 18th is discussion. There'll be... There's no action that night because we don't have the necessary reviews and plans in, but we're doing this to work with you to input early on and work together for a cooperative and, you know, partnership on getting this solved. So I just want you to come in with the expectation that you're walking out on the 18th and it's done. It's just to start a discussion.
Thank you. Yeah. I just want to say we're committed.
Good. Great.
Thank you. Just the...
Just the plans that he submitted.
Plans that he submitted.
The plans, because I...
Yeah.
But are these the ones...
P&amp;Z hasn't seen them yet.
The ones that you, that you updated them to?
The ones that I submitted.
Okay, well, these aren't the updated ones.
They're the ones that I submitted, so anybody that wants to take a look, I got them back there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hey, Feltler. Moving on to old business, pending legislation motions. Ordinance 2018-38, an ordinance amending section 1327.01 of the codified ordinances of Orange Village to restate the deposit requirement for professional fees ratifying prior actions taken in accordance with the policy of the village and declaring emergency. This is on for third reading. Would anybody like to make a motion to pass this tonight? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments relative to this? Steve, nothing's changed since the last? If nothing, if you'd call roll, please, Anna.
Braverman?
Klein?
Yes.
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance 2018-41, an ordinance amending section 931B of the codified ordinances of Orange Village, requiring persons and/or entities to make a cleaning and repair deposit for the use of the village municipal facilities and declaring emergency. This is on for third reading. Would anybody like to make a motion? I will, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments on this? Steve, no changes since the last?
That's correct.
Yes. No other comments, if you'd call roll, please?
Braverman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Bilskey?
Yes.
Luder?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Duber?
Yes. I'm going to table ordinance 2018-43 until the end of the meeting after the executive session, so we will get back to that tonight. Moving on to new business, ordinance 2018-46, an ordinance approving, confirming the appointment of Stephen Hovansik and Associates, Inc. as Orange Village engineer, and repealing certain ordinances. This is on for first reading. Steve, do you have, I mean, it's...
Yeah, there's an adjustment, there's adjustment to the hourly that's at the, that's in there.
A red line, or...
Didn't do a red line.
Wait, did you get the letter from him that shows how much it's going up for each thing?
I'm sure I...
It was a separate piece of correspondence.
It was, oh, here it is. I just, third engineer, we'll get this to you before next week. The current is 97.50, the 2019 request is 100. Let me just preface this by saying, I believe it's been two years since he asked for a raise? Or three?
I think it's two.
Staff engineer, 74.50, going up to 76.50. Draftsmen, AutoCAD worker, from $50.50 to $52. The survey crew going from 104 to 107. Registered surveyor from 76 to 78. And construction observation, which we really use a lot, from 41 to 42.
So, one to three bucks.
What?
One to $3 an hour for all of them.
Okay. All right. Aren't, aren't most of these fees collected, fees collected from applicants for their projects?
Not most, because we have, most of it comes out of the 406 for all the infrastructure projects. But the degree that any of his bills or any of these charges apply to a specific project that we see applying zoning, they pay for.
Right, the infrastructure would be entirely out of our resources, but, but a lot of the work that they're doing that comes, for example, planning and zoning issues and new building...
All those letters we see every meeting, that's charged to the applicant.
Be charged to the applicant, so we won't see a lot of, all of this cost, we'll see some of it.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments on this?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can I remember, Steve Hovansik's firm has not had a pay raise in several years?
Just, they just, yeah, Mary just said two years, I think. No, no, that's okay.
And Steve confirmed it's two, I don't know if it's two or three, but Steve thinks two.
I think it was in the letter.
Wait, wait, maybe he says in the letter. You're right, Steve.
Hold on. Next week, okay.
The fee, the engineering fees for construction projects, the Schedule I and Schedule II that we, is our largest chunk of bills, are remaining the same. This is the first hourly rate increase since 2016.
And it would go into effect in 2019, so it's...
Will you, when you're done with that, will you give that to Anna, so she can pass it out to everybody on council? Please. Thank you. So, everybody will have that.
Know to look for it, and to get out of my pile, and...
That's, that's no big deal, so, so Anna will pass it out, and so it'll be in our next meeting packet. Any other comments? Moving on to ordinance 2018-47, ordinance amending existing chapter 721 peddlers of the codified ordinances of Orange Village by enacting a new chapter 721 peddlers and canvassers, and repealing certain ordinances. This is on for first reading. This, I think everybody has had a chance to review this ordinance, it was discussed years ago, and we've made some changes to it, and with the input of the police chief, and I know Mr. Bilskey did a good job of bringing this back up, and does anybody have any comments?
The significant change to the chapter as it currently exists is this adds the do-not-knock registry, so that people who wish to post a sign saying no solicitors, there is a, there's an ordinance that allows them also to register with the village to give notice to people who would otherwise want to go door-to-door, that they're not welcome at the door. The version, the version in the code book does not have that provision. This adds the do-not-knock registry. That's right, that's right.
Well, this is the first reading, there's no red line to, oh, of the last one, you're saying? Okay.
I'll get your red line.
Oh, of what's added? Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to bring something up with this.
Yes.
So, as it stands here, the restrictions under 721.06 for restrictions, no person shall peddle or canvass except between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. I'm very concerned about the lateness of the 9:00 PM hour. I spoke to a number of residents, those with children, especially small children, are in bed well before then, they don't want people waking them up. I went through there, and then also...
Slam the door in their face.
...people coming knocking on your door when it's dark. I looked at a dozen other municipalities that have these, just about all of them start at 9:00 AM, that's not an issue. About half of them end at 7:00 PM, half of them end at 8:00 PM. One of them was the earlier of 8:00 PM or sunset. To put this in context, if you look at when the sunset times are, from September 18th until March 12th each year, sunset is before 7:30 at night. I would like to amend this to have our, let's go from 9:00 AM until 7:30 PM. And if somebody wants, Brandon said seven, seven's fine. The, I mean, literally, it's evenly split among other municipalities between ending at 7:00 or 8:00 at night.
So, are you making a motion to amend to 7:00?
I will make a motion to amend to 7:00.
Second that. Comments? If you'll call roll on amending to 7:00.
Braverman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Bilskey?
Yes.
Luder?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Duber?
Yes. All right. So, we'll make that change for the next meeting. Thank you. Any other comments on that?
Joe.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Well, moving to ordinance 2018-48, an ordinance to make annual appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of Orange Village during the calendar year 2019. This is on for first reading.
We need to do the same again, if you can have this in place before the end of the year, otherwise you could get in on the audit. This is routine of keeping, catch-up, get-up, books in order, kind of bookkeeping.
Dana, if you'd just give a brief little synopsis here, please?
2018-48 is the 2019 appropriation ordinance. We met last week at the finance committee and reviewed the budget for 2019. This would have to be adopted by the next meeting, latest. The next meeting, we will also have the final budget for 2018.
Start the operating budget for the next year.
Allow us to spend money starting January 1st. And I'm so sorry when I explained, I was totally off. I was making, I was thinking it was catch-up from this year. This is so we can spend money next year. A lot of communities do, you know, temporary appropriations, but since I've been mayor, we have been ready for the permanent ones before the first year, every year.
Make a motion to spend the rules, pass ordinance 2018-48?
Second.
Thank you. If you call roll on suspension, please?
Braverman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Bilskey?
Yes.
Luder?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Duber?
Yes. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-48?
Second.
Thank you, is there any other comments?
Well, I just wanted, I mean, these are all subject to change.
Yes, of course.
This is just to start.
You're the management operating budget that you passed last month. He says a...
Yeah. Any other comments? All right. Please.
Braverman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Bilskey?
Yes.
Luder?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Duber?
Okay, next.
Moving on to audience comments relating to matters which advance to the village. Okay. Community reports and comments by council members. Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Braverman?
I just wanted to make a brief comment about, it was terrible this evening at Pinecrest, the mayor kicked off, I kicked off, and jumped into the Fourth Day Bonanza by having a menorah wedding at Pinecrest, and obviously she represented the village very well, the nice event, and the singing, it went very well. That was a good idea.
All those rabbis that were there told me they know Francis. And my rabbis.
No, that's all I just... I have to be there to, I'm there for the duck calls.
All right.
Excellent choice.
Bilskey?
First couple of things, I guess, are directed towards Mr. Zugen, I had some questions for you. Where are we at with the signals? Are we satisfied that things are where they need to be for getting in and out of Pinecrest?
Myself and the engineer saw a punch list, there was one or two things, first, Chagrin Highlands are supposed to take care of, part of the, has been picked up, which is a part of this process, but the second part, we're tying into the Beechwood system, so it's closer there. I think we're starting to say, you know, that we're not hearing as many complaints and stuff, so it should be working relatively up to speed now.
And if you're headed westbound on Harvard towards 271, turning into Chagrin Highlands, like Cooper's Hawk, is that left turn signal been activated yet? I know it wasn't as of a couple of weeks ago.
That was one of the things on the punch list that they were having a real issue with, that they needed to work on.
Okay.
It's not a real-time island.
It's definitely been flowing a lot better in the times I've been there, so. Then the other question, as far as the trails here on Lander, are those going as scheduled? Any guesstimate as to when Lander's going to be reopened?
Whether pending, day one, start next week, pulling out driveway, myself and the engineer are, will be meeting with the contractor this week to discuss the future plans for the month.
People have been... Very surprising, concrete being poured, it's snowing, but...
Yes, we've dealt with a number of messages to the contractor.
It's nice to see progress being made.
Didn't you see the blankets are warm?
Yes. There are major requirements, covering, blanket eating, and stuff like that, but they also go ahead and notify that they're at risk for pouring right now and well, too, so.
My other comment is directed to everybody on council, and I would like to discuss the time of council meetings. I know, especially in the last few months, we've had a lot of very relevant, important issues, and the meetings have been extending rather late into the evening, which is fine. In full disclosure, some of us wake up extremely early in the morning, and when the clock hits 9:00, I will be the first to admit, I am not as sharp as I should be.
In the morning.
Discuss the idea of potentially moving...
Moving it earlier?
Moving council meetings up to, starting at 7:30, 7:00, something along those lines.
Last year, and you couldn't get here that early because of activities and stuff?
Me?
Judd was the one who was...
We moved planning and zoning up from 7:30 to 6:30, I think is the best thing we've ever done.
Now, I know we had discussed this a little bit at the end of last month's, last meeting, which extended for a couple of hours. I would say that for those of us, which is almost half of us who serve on finance, I would like to, if we move the meeting up, not add a meeting another night, because...
We just move the finance up, commence?
If we, you know, half an hour, or whatever it is, if we were able to move council up a half an hour.
Happy to make that work.
Do you have an organizational meeting in January? That's a perfect time to discuss that process, and you need legislation to change the regular meeting.
Let me ponder a little bit, and we can talk.
Great idea, just know this, not to change it, because I don't need that. Texture has gone to the printer.
Well, that's true, but based upon the wonderful, large audience here, I don't think it's going to affect too many people, plus...
Well, we'll educate them in our newsletter.
In your newsletter.
Between newsletter, electronic, and paper. Right.
And recycling.
And maybe they'll start showing up a bit earlier.
Perhaps.
And, I think it's great.
Well, we'll...
Anyhow, thank you for considering that.
Live with a half an hour.
Mr. Klein?
Planning commission met last night, we had a number of things on the agenda, unfortunately. One of the applicants did not show up. Mayor, did we hear anything from Pulte about their failure to attend last night?
He's asking a question, sorry.
I'm so sorry, Judd.
Have we heard anything from Pulte regarding their attendance?
On the next agenda.
All right, it would've been nice to have known that ahead of time, but...
That he wasn't going to make it to the meeting.
Because we didn't have to have that meeting last night, other than...
That was, the one item that was on the agenda, it could've...
He's...
In any event, one item on the agenda, a room addition, which was passed, and that was about it from that. And I want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, and I'm looking forward to working with Moonies in their, for their plan of redevelopment of their site.
Hopefully, it will get us to a resolution.
We'll talk further in the future when we have more information.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Yes, talking about Moonies, legislation 2018-45, if Beechwood has tabled this legislation indefinitely, will we be looking at this in a completely different form, or what are we going to do with it? Because it's not apropos anymore. I'm asking the law director for an opinion, please. What will we do?
For what?
For legislation 2018-45, which was agreeing to adjust the boundaries between Orange Village and Beechwood. If Beechwood has tabled their aspect of their legislation indefinitely, where does that leave us? Or doesn't it?
Can I just say that I spoke to a councilperson at Beechwood who told me it could be brought up and suspended and passed in one reading. It may change, it may morph, it may whatever, but I suggest we go ahead with our process and finish our...
Which is following the legislation as written?
Unless something changes between now and next month, yes, we should stick to our plan.
But how can, how can you change the bound, if, if you're saying Beechwood could change something in a week, but you've got to have two adjoining municipal corporations by ordinance to do this, and...
It doesn't go into effect if they don't pass theirs.
Well, that's where I'm coming from. So then, what would you, my question is, if there's this piece of legislation out there for us, and Beechwood has decided that they're going to table it indefinitely, and we might be looking at it in a different way, would we, would we vote on this to defeat it? What would we do with it? We can't have it just kicking around out there.
Well, I think you'll have more information as time passes. I think if it's determined...
I think if it's determined by Beechwood to pass it, you'll have an answer. And if it's determined by Beechwood to never pass it, we'll have an answer.
This is just second meeting.
But it's on for readings tonight. It's going to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's set for a hearing at the, at the regular meeting in January, and-
For here, for Planning and Zoning, or here, for here, for us?
For here.
Yeah, okay.
It's going to be heard at the December 18th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And, you know, I don't recommend making a decision before you have all the information in, and that, I would say that would include understanding what Beechwood's disposition-
Of course.
Position is.
That's my concern. The concern is that we would have this floating around here, and they've defeated it or whatever.
Their decision doesn't prohibit you from enacting the ordinance. It would only prohibit it from becoming effective and going into effect and causing the boundary to be, the bridge to melt.
Well, it's, no, it's, it's the boundary business that was puzzling to me.
The thing, if only one part-
I, that's why I'm bringing this up. That's, that's my whole argument. So, and I, you know, don't be confused over this. I want to know, you know, where we're going and what we're doing, so we get this right. Because I've known this, historically, this has been a, a sort of an old chestnut that's been going on.
It gives them a little nuh-uh.
Who that?
Beechwood. We can ask ours, maybe even the local.
I've, I'm just, I'm just repeating what I heard this evening, so. Okay, so, it looks as though they will be coming, Moonies will be coming to Planning and Zoning, as I'm understanding this, and then we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll make-
They've not related to this ordinance. They have, they-
There is a public hearing, because the ordinance has the zoning component to it.
But the-
But the 18th, December 18th, those-
That's separate.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
The public hearing will be on this legislation.
Zoning for recommendation on the-
That is correct.
The disordnance.
Yes.
And the zoning change that would be necessitated by-
So, that is a boundary change.
But it would still be moot if Beechwood decides not to work. So, that's where I need to make clear.
The one, like we never did a thing.
Okay, I just needed to know that. Okay.
If I might add to that, if Beechwood, it's more rapidly brings it forward to action, and we take action on it at our end, it will be more quickly enacted and being able to go into effect if we've already addressed the legislation on it, instead of waiting for what Beechwood's going to do.
Sort of understand that. Yeah, sort of. The other thing, I had some phone calls about the icy park trails. Did we determine we weren't going to do anything about that till next year?
We even thought anything was a park trail.
I know, but were you going to in the winter? What was-
Not this year.
I know, I know not this year. Were you going to do it in 2019 or no?
We just put half the money for a snow plow tractor in the budget. We're saving for it for a couple of years. We're going to evaluate with the usage and the need and the demand and take the temperature of the community and-
Well, the community's called me about it. So, I just said, as far as I knew, that we had it on the table somewhere. It was good, not this year. I said, it wouldn't be done this year.
It's been talked about based on whether we're going to do the trails or not. To buy a piece of equipment for there if we're not doing the trails might be different than what we would buy to do the-
I get that, but are you thinking of doing the trails? That's my question or no?
This year, no.
Next year, maybe.
We will, the pulse of the residents is what we were waiting for.
Well-
Because there's a lot to it also involved with pushing snow back into driveways and stuff like that. So, it's not a yes or no kind of thing. We were waiting to try and get feedback from our residents, whether they would consider wanting the trails done or not.
Okay, but then what about the actual park trails? Will you be considering doing, are you doing those or no, in the actual park?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Does somebody, not now or not?
It is not now.
Even if you got the extra piece-
Before the horse, until trying to work whether the trails around the village and the park we were doing together.
Okay, not at all. Okay, all right. Okay, well, okay, as long as I can pass that message along. Okay.
I just want to learn, too, like, I know we talked about this before, but when we, it sounds so simple to just go and plow the trails, but it can cause a slew of other problems, like snow in people's driveways on, on the all-purpose pass. But when we talked about it back in the park, we talked about that it has the potential to actually make it a slippery air situation.
I didn't remember that.
As, as, say, the daytime melts, some of the snow that's been plowed away, but there's still a little bit left on there, because they're not salting back there, then that turns to a sheet of ice.
Maybe we should salt and not plow.
I don't know. I, I just tell people to stay out, you know, go as far as you can go in the park.
It doesn't fit.
It's sort of gone out the window, by the way.
The topic, it's not so-
Walk around in the wintertime, put your boots on.
I do. I do. I've got ice trackers.
Other comments, Mr. Klein?
Yeah, there was just, what happened to the original variance on Cambridge Court? We didn't need it. Did it come before you for the addition, and have you passed it yet or no?
Well, yes, that was the, that was the item that was on the agenda last night. What was discovered is there was a defect in the title for the property, and the property is actually 30 feet deeper than it was, was indicated on the original drawings prepared by the architect as a result of that additional 30 feet. No variance was required. We, the engineer has looked at, at the property, and the effect of the, potential effect for the addition will add no water to the, to the site. And there's a yard drain.
It doesn't go to Orange Meadow, it goes north to Orange.
No, I know, but that precipitated some correspondence, and the mayor was very kind.
Back from you.
No, well, because I'm trying to solicit my neighbors, and it's the holidays, but I will get it together. My whole street is incredibly wet, and it has been, excuse me, it's low-lying, and the water, they're very worried, especially two neighbors, that they've had so many issues with water that they just don't want to even think of any more coming from Cambridge Court. You're assu-
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, I'm trying to get, I thank the mayor, because I'm trying to get my neighbors together on that. I might have to throw out a few dates, and you'll have to see if your engineer or whomever could come and meet with it. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciated that. So did they. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, happy Hanukkah. Yes, I forgot. Lot, because here we come.
Mayor, comments?
Just a heads up on some activity that's going to be rolled out for next week. For first reading, we will have refunding legislation for the refunding of bonds that we've talked about before. Remember, Matt was here, and saves about $50,000 net of expenses, and now's the time to strike. We will start the first reading of the ordinance to accept Orange Place South, which was just, you know, mentioned about the few little punch item things, but that's coming before us. We will be starting the ordinance that describes or puts in the details of how the new variance process will work that was passed as a charter amendment. And that will be referred to Planning and Zoning. Also, not next week, isn't January Ra- oh, yes, next week, we have a public hearing in the third reading of the Ra'wut, Ra'wut variance, which is for making a deck on top of the slab, so they're not sitting in wetness when they go outside in their backyard. That's on for third reading. And I know that everyone looks forward to this every year, but next week is the week we review the year and list the accomplishments for 2018.
Pinecrest, here we come. Pinecrest, here we come.
Report, right?
No.
The list is very long. And even if you get the newsletter before you hear the accomplishments or goals, those are the, like, made-for-print edition. You guys are going to get the expanded, extended, in detail.
Can't wait.
Oh, coming to a theater or drive-in near you.
Anything else? No? Okay. Like I said, we have to come, we're going to go into executive session, then we're going to come back to ordinance 2018-43. So, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment and compensation of village officials and employees, and for the purpose of discussing pending or prospective litigation?
Removed.
Second.
Would you call roll on that, please?
Braberman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Belsky?
Yes.
Luter?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Duber?
Yes.
Those are people come here.